Why don't we go ahead and get started with the budget stuff to begin with and kind of see where it takes us?
Okay. Turn it over to Kent.
Let me share my screen here.
And I think Mary Martha's got those documents, right Jennifer? Okay.
So. Put a little packet out and reach the trustees. There's three documents in there. First one is legal budget information and the operating budget information and supplemental information. So. I'll just go ahead and start walking through this. I want to start with the notice of public hearing. Uh which looks like this. It's up on the screen. This is a document that. We're recommending that the board approve at the August board meeting. And. I mean. Up here. You know, my computer's not wanting to work right now. Okay. And for those of you who have the document at the top, it it gives you information on the hearing. Well. Excel's not.
It's frozen.
Yeah.
Work on this.
So. Yeah, the the top part gives the information for the hearing. It'll be in this building, this room, September 12th. At 4:30. That's the regular. Board meeting. The way that the agenda is generally structured is that's first thing on the meeting then. Uh there'll be. Uh an action item to prove it at that time. So I shouldn't be surprised uh for the basic numbers here. We showed you these before. The. Amount of taxes to be levied is 12 million, nine, twenty eight, one thirty eight. Uh same as it's been the last two years, which goes on the budget here. The um. Estimated. Uh mill rate is twelve point six zero six. The R and R shows down here at twelve point four three one. So this is the main figures. On here. So we'll move on. I want to move on to the next document. Which is uh attached to it if you have the the paper documents. Let's see if this one works. So this is um. A reconciliation that we do every year. Uh there's a couple of numbers that from here that show on the. Legal budget document, the actual expenditures. From the year that just ended. So that's in column C here. And the legal budget for 2024. So. If you go down and look at those totals. The total of all those funds actually expenditures was sixty eight thousand, seven hundred, sixty eight million, seven hundred and twenty three thousand. The uh legal budget total expenditures is eighty nine million, seven hundred and seventy eight thousand. So. We'd like to document this so so people can see why we're doing that. So this um. Difference column here. Makes up the majority of that. You can see that a lot of these funds are um general fund designated accounts. We don't actually include those in the operating budget. But we need to budget for them on the legal document. So we have legal authority to spend that if the board would authorize it. Um this legal authority doesn't give the administration the authority to. Uh spend that money. It would go through the normal. Uh project of purchasing with the thirty five thousand dollar limit of Dr. Curl and everything else coming into the board. But what it does do is give us the legal authority for the board to approve uh those. So. Like um come down here to. Let me get one here. Well, the insurance deductible reserve. We've got about um four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we don't plan on spending that. Unless we would have a large claim. And if we did, then this would give us a legal authority to spend that. So that's uh. The dot idea of what this legal budget rec does also shows, you know, the other funds like campus life funds. And so forth. So um, you know, I should back up a minute probably. I kind of jumped into what we're doing here, but I I want to mention that. We plan on putting all these documents in a bound book and mailing it to the trustees. By the first of August, which is about eleven or ten or eleven days before the board meeting. So what we wanted to do today. Was go through. Uh we've just um. Got this information kind of all pulled together in accounting and a draft form. I think we're pretty confident about these numbers. I don't think. We're going to have significant changes in these numbers, but we will want to go through and do a little more review. And uh look at some of the spending plans when we get over to the. The supplemental information. So with that background, uh that's the information I wanted to share about the legal budget. Again. There'll be a TFA for the August board meeting, asking you to approve the notice of public hearing. And, you know, I think I I said that wrong. That the notice, the public hearing is actually in September. That's when we would actually have, you know, the public hearing. I think I said August some.
You got September on there.
Got a little bit ahead of myself there. Too excited, I guess, to go through all this exciting budget information. Um so any questions or comments about where we're headed with that?
Maybe just a quick one. The first column total at the bottom, grand total of sixty eight. About fourteen of that stuff we could have spent but didn't. There's some designated funds. Or was it the?
Oh, um. Yeah, the um. So you said, what you're asking is how high was the legal budget last year?
Did we spend sixty eight million last year? Is that that same?
That's what we actually did spend, yes. So the legal budget would have been probably uh fifteen million dollars higher than that.
But our but our we had planned on spending was like fifty three, fifty two last year, something like that.
Well, and I think what you're talking about is the operating budget, which I'll get into that next. It it it's summarized down here below. Uh on lines thirty. Well, you probably don't have this. Maybe you have those lines.
They're not.
Okay, yeah, down at the very bottom says um. Reconciliation of the um unaudited figures for the operating funds. So what we had in the operating. Fund, what we actually spent was fifty one million, eight twenty six. Now that was about. Two and a half million dollars less than the actual legal or the actual operating budget, which is the next thing I'm going to go through. And you should have, if you look on paper, you have it. One that looks like this with some blueprinting on it. I'll need to. Go back and. Open that document. Lose someone? Okay, so sharing the operating budget now on the screen. The first page, there's some notes, uh talk about. You know, description of what the operating funds are. Basically, it's the general fund and the. Post-secondary technical education fund, but um excluding all those designated funds. That are um included within those funds. And there's some information here. On credit hours. Uh we are. Uh operating budget for next year. Um does have a about a three percent enrollment decrease built into it. Um we think there's some signs that hopefully it may not decrease that much, but. Uh we're kind of in a wait and see pattern. So we're not, we decided not to change. How the budget um. That we made preliminary recommendation in April with those credit hours. Some local tax information there, the valuation. Um little bit of valuation history, mill levy history. And the taxes levied. For had a year that just ended, the preceding three years and next year. And a little bit of information on compensation. Can see that um. Well, we in twenty twenty, we were two and a half, twenty one, zero. Then we went to five and five for twenty two and twenty three. And it's a six percent. Raise for twenty four. That's been approved for the staff. It's under consideration uh in the negotiation process. With the faculty. The health insurance increase, you can see, uh we talked about this and and this um. In the budget that we're actually looking at a twenty percent. Uh increase from last year. I think the good news is if you look at the preceding four years. We'd only had a six percent raise in four years. So if you average that out. We've actually done pretty well compared to where we were four years ago. And again, you can stop me if you want to comment or have questions as we go along here. Uh the next page. This is a summary of the twenty three operating budget, the year that just ended. And I just put in a little comparison here. That middle column is what we had estimated when we brought the. Uh preliminary recommendation or update in April. To where we are now. Uh we're pretty close on the revenues. There's a seventeen thousand dollar difference that's made up of. A couple of different components. We had estimated in April that we would underspend the budget by three million dollars. And that was based on. Uh some historical information. We'd been. Uh significantly underspending our budget. Uh we actually came in. Uh under budget by. Uh two point five six one million. So. Um we didn't do. As well. Uh underspending the budget as we had anticipated. So that did cause. It we ended up with more actual expenditures than we had anticipated in April. Uh we still for the year that just ended. Um the revenues exceeded the. Um expenditures by four hundred, excuse me, seven hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. And our unencumbered cash was. Ten point six two million. So. I'm gonna go ahead to um I'll go through this pretty quick, but the next page is a comparison or. Um of our individual revenue items. And this total here ties back to. The page we just looked at. Uh compared to what we thought in April, we um we received less tuition. Um income by about a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. And we had a significant amount more interest income than we had anticipated. So overall, there wasn't much change. Um and there's really no, there was no change to the budget for twenty three. We just. Our basic operations now is to set the budget and then see how. Make the estimate of our actual expenditures by looking at the unspent budget. So I'm going to try to move through this fairly quickly. Again, if if you have questions or comments, feel free to stop me. So this uh next page, I think it's. Says page five, if you have the paper copy. This is a summary. Of the recommended twenty four budget, operating budget that we will. Uh ask you to approve at the September board meeting. Um and you can see how it compares to the um. Budget that we just um. Completed the actual uh numbers. The um so we're anticipating seven hundred, basically seven hundred and twelve thousand more of revenues than we ended up with last year. Our expenditure budget has gone up and that's detailed a couple of pages on from here. So if we. Would hit these estimates, we would actually have a deficit budget of um. One million, nine hundred and sixty seven thousand. And so, you know, that's um somewhat of a concern. We we have talked about that a lot in our VP meeting. Uh one reason that we decided to go ahead and make this recommendation, it it does. Um it is based on what we deem to be the needs of the college to. To adequately run the operation. Uh it also does leave us still. Above the ten point five percent of expenditure target. And while we think that target may be low. We know that we still have um. A significant amount of other cash uh on hand, and we'll go through all that in the uh supplemental information, but that gives us. Um some comfort in uh recommending a deficit budget and um giving us some time to. Look at that and see um. You know, we're able to turn that around through the revenue side or through the expenditure side. Obviously, it's something that we're going to have to work on. Um at the administrative level as we move through the next budget cycle. So um a little more information here. I'm not going to go through this in detail, but the next page. Just details again what our revenue sources are for the. Operating budget. How it compares to where we ended up. To Y E twenty three year. And then the next page. Just the last page here of the operating budget information. This shows you all the additions or deletions. All the changes that were made. From the twenty three budget. For the year that just ended, which was fifty four million, three hundred and eighty seven thousand. To the operating budget that we're. Going to be recommending at the September meeting. Most of these uh changes were made. When we showed you the update in April. Down through. This line twenty eight. There were a few things that came up in the succeeding, you know, in May and June, obviously. We increased our budget, excuse me, our salary increase recommendation, which was again approved for staff. So that um one percent addition costs three hundred and thirty two thousand. We received, of course, a lot more information on the health insurance during that time period. And I I'm sure we've talked to you about this, that we needed to add that four hundred thousand dollars. Uh contribution for the health insurance. And then there's three expenditure items, uh in enrollment management, uh their modematic. System needed to be added to the budget. The uh property insurance, obviously, we talked about that, the June board meeting. And then utilities. You know, once we saw where we were at year end, it became obvious that we had significantly underestimated our utility expenditures. So that will be the uh expenditure budget for next year and the operating funds. That we're in two in September. So if it's okay, if you have questions, I'd be happy to stop. I just think. Going through the supplemental information is important because we have a lot of large. Accounts there that I know you're aware of, but uh. Want to make sure to to bring those to your attention as we move forward. So I'm going to go ahead and. See if I can share that.
I think I might have underestimated my my utilities expense too, especially if. Averagey gets her way.
I think I need to open that file up.
Hey Linda, did you not get the memo to wear a purple shirt tonight?
Okay, so I pulled this up on the screen here and guess it's a. Little thicker document to us in your packet. If you have a paper copy and it says supplemental budget information on the front of it. Um the first page then is a table of contents. And I'll just start scrolling through this, I think. Page one, I think this is a very important um. Page for for the board. I know you. Ask me a lot, how much cash do we have in the institution as a whole? And this. This page summarizes our unencumbered cash balances. And it comes down to twenty eight million dollars. And so you can kind of look through here where it is um.
On S one on the. This document right here. Supplemental budget.
So um. The first part here, you can see that in the um. Operating funds I talked about is having a cash balance of. Ten, ten million, six hundred and some thousand. So in this document, you can see the the general fund. Operating undesignedated is ten million, five hundred and seventy eight thousand and. Just scroll on down here a little farther. The. Uh PTE fund. Here, the um. Undesignated part of that is forty four thousand. So those two numbers together add up to the. A ten million, six hundred thousand that we show as. Uh undesignedated for the general and PTE fund. The rest of the cash in the. General and PTE fund on what we call the designated reserves. We talk a lot about these in our budget updates, but. I'll just run through them here. And then. For most of these, there's a specific page in the supplemental where we show where the rep came from. What we're planning for the expenditures and so forth, but you just kind of walk down. Uh on page one here, you see that the general designated accounts uh have a. A balance at June thirty, twenty twenty three of one million, eight hundred and ninety three thousand. The program development reserve, two hundred thousand roughly, strategic initiatives, one point eight million. Facilities funds, uh two hundred and seventy three thousand, deferred maintenance reserve, three million. Capital project designated reserve, one point one million. Technology designated reserve, two million, and the insurance deductible designated reserve, four hundred and forty six thousand. And then a little bit farther down, the PTE designated accounts had a year in balance of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Then other funds of the college, aside from the general and the PGE fund, would be the capital outlay fund. Chad a balance of four hundred and thirty nine thousand at the end of the year. That was. Uh that's been a carryover from the um. The mill levy projects and and there's a page in the back that. Uh talks about that. The auxiliary funds, these are mostly our campus life funds, uh. A student union residence hall. And then the um. Adult basic ed and non-credit, these we we generally um keep them at like a zero balance. They're supported somewhat from the general fund. There's a transfer that goes over to from the general fund to help support those two funds. A restricted funds, while we show a balance there, those are generally um grant funds, mostly federal grants. So if there is a balance, it's designated within the grant for a particular purpose. And then the agency funds are actually funds that. We don't consider these the college dollars. They're they're usually called deposits held for others. So like the biggest balance in there, I believe, is like from the Grizzly backers. And we hold it in our account, but we don't control how it's spent. So that's that's generally what's in this document. There's a couple more sheets, like the next sheet just gives some of our bank balances, where the money is in different banks. And what our liabilities are. And. Then the next page there is a little more detail about. The revenues and expenditures within each fund. A lot of this information right here, we put in a. Really mostly for accounting and for finance. So I can make sure and our county people can make sure. Everything ties in for all these funds and that. The the amounts that we show in the back part of the book agree to the amounts that we show in the front part of the book. So then, yes.
I don't know about anything else, but I know. This is what we got you here.
Right.
It's. Pretty thick. And I guess if we're going to update this document, then I'd like to see an upgrade that looks like this.
Yeah, well, here's what we're going to do. This is what we were able to do at this time. So we're going to bring it to you as a draft. So when you see the actual document. We're going to mail that out August first. So you'll have at least ten days before the August board meeting, which is when we will ask you to approve the public hearing. We will ask you to approve the actual budget until September. So what we wanted to do was walk through this document with you. So. We could try to tell you where things are in the document and give you time to look at it. Then uh when we ask you to approve the uh notice of public hearing, obviously, there'll be a motion. So there'll be time for discussion at at that motion.
While I shake this. I would be better able to function if I. And if we get to get it in August first, then.
Yeah, and that that document there that you're looking at, it's basically these three documents. I just give them to you separately. And that. In that document you're looking at, they're combined into one document with three sections.
I think he's telling you it is the same. It's just if you combine the three together, it's the same. Is that what you're saying, Ken?
I hear what you said.
Yeah, that's fine. I think we can go ahead and move. Yeah. So Yeah, yeah, we'll be mailing you the the bound copy August 1st. So just kind of walk through some of these, so you know what's in here a little more. Leave. This is page six. Designated general fund. So this is made up of a lot of smaller funds. A lot of it is fee funds or funds that come in from a particular purpose, like on line 14, you see the workroom. The workroom actually charges different budgets of the college. So if, say, our public relations department uses a workroom to do color copies. There's money transferred from the budget of marketing over to the workroom. And then they build up funds that are used to purchase large pieces of equipment. There's, you know, they have the very large copier over there. So again, a lot of fee funds. To the 200 building, 100 building, used to be in the 200 building. I'm behind the times.
Probably more than one copier.
And there's also a doctor.
Probably copious amounts of paper there, too.
Yeah, it's called it's the secretarial center. It's the workroom. They do print mail.
We have one here as well as
We have one here in the 100 building and then there's one in the Standover building as well.
I will say that if you look at the amount of money we've spent on paper for the past five years, it's steadily gone down. That's a good thing. The next page, this is just a summary of what we called the indirect HIRF money. And you can see there in the sources of funds. It talks about indirect costs or lost revenue. So I'm on page six.
Seven.
Page seven, I'm sorry, of this document here. And I'm going to be in this document the rest of the time. So we're on page seven. So we were able to put about $8 million into the general fund from either last revenue, which specifically goes back to language that was in each one of the grants that said if your revenues decline from year to year during immediately following the COVID year of 2020, you were able to take some of the HIRF money and take it back to your general fund. And then the indirect costs is a formula that we could use based on the amount of the grant. So probably more interesting piece of it is down in the expenditures. It gives you some sense of where we used that money. And a lot of it was used for the deferred maintenance projects. You can see on lines 19, 20, and 21. And then another other amounts of it went to some of the other various designated accounts. So I'll give you a little idea of where the HIRF money has gone. So the next page is page eight. It's the designated portion of the PTE, which is post-secondary technical education. And most of these accounts are B accounts. You can see down here buyer supply fee account, that's for fire science, collision repair, auto repair, engineering tech. So you kind of get a feel for what most of these designated accounts are. The you know, the deans and lead faculty in those areas are able to build up a little bit of money to to use in purchasing supplies and equipment. And we keep track of it within each area so we know what was spent from each of those fee accounts. Now, the next page is what we call the development or academic development fund. Dr. Neville is in charge of managing this fund. We generally transferred about 40,000 each year from the operating funds. You can see though, in the 2024 sources of funds, state apprenticeship funds, 1.4 million dollars. And we're at that our plan in accounting is put that in the development fund, but we're setting up a separate department for that. So the expenditure from that money that came from the grant, we want to keep track of that separately from the other development funds. And as we get a little more farther along in our accounting and in representing this in the work paper here, we'll probably break that out and show a separate column or separate section that'll be strictly for those apprenticeship funds.
Is part of that from like technical education and CTE and stuff like that?
Do you want to talk about it, Kim?
It's funds that the legislature granted to ensure there's specific build out apprenticeships now. They don't give you any guidelines as far as, you know, programmatic or what but it'll it'll be to fill, you know, additional partnerships.
With businesses and stuff like that to place students.
And we could even you know, right now, they're intended to be probably one-time dollars, depending on whatever institution's plan.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. We're, you know, we're going to track them. All the institutions are going to track them. And the thought is, is that they if they show some benefit that they could ask again next year in the legislative budget for additional funding. So and every institution will, you know, kind of use them differently depending upon their CTE programs and and the partnerships that they have.
So, excuse me. You can see here down below a little bit on the expenditure side, we bought some software and had some development expenditures for 2023. And this is sort of a tentative plan at this time, but you can see for the in the budget estimate column, there's some equipment, computers, marketing, IR dashboard, OERs, that's for open educational resources for books that digital books, one one method of delivering digital books to our students and diesel tech equipment. So those are some of the projected expenditures that are being considered. That would be out of the the academic development fund portion, not out of the apprenticeship funds. And again, we'll we'll do a little better job of separating those as we move forward.
The intent is also that those funds have to be spent or encumbered in the next year of the apprenticeship dollars.
So the next page in funds here, what we call the strategic development funds. We haven't had any money added to that in 23. There was it started out with $2 million. It came from the indirect HIRF money. And then I think there was another 100,000 from the operating budget. So at one point had 2.1 million, which is the was the beginning unencumbered cash on line 10 at the beginning of 2023. There was $254,000 spent out of that this year. And I think these items came to the board, or they came to the board for approval. The fine arts lighting, campus logic, and a fine art sound. And then at the campus lodging, that was a logic that was approved. Some of that got spent in 23, but some of it will be spent in 24. And there's still, you know, we have a balance there going forward. It's not designated at this time.
And by 24, you're just meaning after July the 1st, when the new
Right, we're actually
When the new fiscal year began, yeah.
Yes, thank you. So the next page is what we call a facilities fund. This is sort of for routine ongoing maintenance that we don't really think comes to the level of a capital project. So each year Ireland goes through and does a spending plan. And you can see down here, he's identified about $700,000 of projects for the upcoming year. It never never turns out to be exactly what we spend it on, but it gives us an idea. And so we generally try to budget for this to be zero. A lot of times we don't get around to spending it all. You can see that at the end of the 23 year, we still had 273,000 left over. So we'll continue to monitor that and we'll update the board on this, you know, it with our fall and spring budget updates. The next page.
And some of that is, is it just like schedules of contractors and things like that?
Possibly, yeah.
The money was unspent, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, like where somebody couldn't do it until July or August and
Well, yeah, some of it, I mean, Ireland, his staff, just don't get around to bidding everything out. So, you know, it sort of gives them a guy a roadmap on where they want to go. So on page 12, this is our deferred maintenance reserve. And can see that at the end of the current year, we had a balance of 3,012,000. There's no, we don't have any mechanism in our budget to replenish this fund. Over the years, we've been able to put in some some of the HIRF money, or sometimes when we had excess, what we called excess operating cash, we would move it over there. But we do have a source for 24, you can see on line five that again, this is additional state money. The the state gave us three three allocations of cash for 24 that we haven't normally got. We talked about the the last one, this one's for the capital lay. And then there's another 250,000 for the cybersecurity. And we'll get to that when we get to the technology fund. But so we had the workforce development. And for this year, the state gave Butler an additional 1.376 million for what they call capital outlay. There's again, there's no guidance on this other than, you know, the name, capital outlay. So we're putting it in the designated deferred maintenance fund.
Just one question. Does this have, is this additional to the the fund is completely an extra, well, it was 3.4 last year, 3.4 million. Is this addition additional to that money? So this year is supposed to be four.
See, last year.
Be fully funded.
No, the we wish in 23, our state grant for general fund and PTE went up by 3.4 million dollars. I think that's what you're referring to. That's an additional to that. That 3.4 million that we got, that's an ongoing amount that that we'll get now is our base for what we call our tiered and non-tiered operating grants. Yeah, this is, as far as we know, well, a one-time addition. Some colleges have gotten capital outlay money. And we may get some in the future, but it's not likely to be nearly this amount.
The the community colleges years ago that combined the tech, when the technical schools were moving to the technical college level, they could either affiliate with a community college or they could do standalone accreditation or something. The the technical schools that over time had affiliated with community colleges that because of that combination somehow in that legislation, those community colleges have also have always gotten some level of capital outlay. And Heather Morgan asked this year for, you know, for the rest of us to have some capital outlay because nobody had ever gotten any. And and the universities get capital outlay dollars. And so this was a kind of a one-time.
I guess I'm just making sure the the fully funded money wasn't earmarked for this.
Yeah, it's a separate part.
Separate special kind of addition.
So along with the balance that we had and the money from the state, can see that the the big project here was what we call the Simpson project. It's mostly the the HVAC system in the 500 building in the gymnasium. And then there's some various projects, which we didn't spell those out for 23, but 1,690,000 that we list as various projects, which we would anticipate for 20 FY24, the current year. Our we have detail on the next page. Page 13 in the FY24 column.
Of the various projects, yeah.
Go down and you can see that 1.69 total. So this is similar to the facility fund. Only this is some bigger funds, bigger dollar amounts. Sometimes they actually get intertwined or or mixed, but for the most part, this is what our plan is on that. And we have some some more capital project money. So on page 14, this is what we call our capital project reserve. Again, we don't have anything. This is a carryover balance. And you can see down there underneath, I put a note that said the spending plan will be considered by the capital project team. So that's one thing that we've talked about. Dr. Crowe has specifically asked me to make sure that we get the capital project team organized. This year, we talked about it in our VP meeting, we're going to have a an administrative organizational meeting coming up here sometime within the next month. And we did plan on talking to the capital project team and looking at how we can spend some of these, how we should be planning for this. So I'll kind of leave that for now and we'll see how how we can progress in getting that organized. So moving along here. Next page is the tech fund. And you can see on pay on line five there, this is a $250,000 I mentioned for FY24 that the state provided to the college. It's really for cybersecurity. Bill's been working with his team and
He had a plan for that, right?
And there's there's the multi-student cybersecurity issue that we planned for, and this is just going to help us in talking and so that caused it. And those are pieces that we sent some of it's not a role. We brought things like rapid identity that we need to to change and we talked about what we're bringing back for TFA, now we provision accounts, create those, those security bases there. We've got our Palo Alto firewall changed that has the that have to happen with that. Palo Alto this year, I think. Hardware and software. Hardware software, so there's, the twenty five thousand dollars is definitely for us, but we're going to spend more than that.
Yeah. So if you kind of look down on line twelve, it said, spending plan for twenty twenty four, seven hundred and fourteen thousand. And so I'll move over there in a second. Then the other thing to note, we have an ending balance of one point eight seven, one million eight hundred and seventy two thousand here that we're anticipating at the end of next year, if we spend the seven hundred and fourteen. I think both of those figures coming to perspective on the next page. Page sixteen, you can actually see the detail of how we plan to spend the seven hundred and fourteen thousand there. And then to put the ending balance in perspective, if you look at the total bills schedules this out through twenty thirty, but you can see he's estimating that over the next, what would that be? Six years is planning on needing about six million dollars to cover the, these types of IT expenses for software, hardware and, and inflation factors. And so hopefully that gives you an idea of, of why we're trying to build up funds in that category.
So to your question, Shelby, like, so the data center core technology on there that's one eighty, those are, that, that includes our Palo Alto, our firewalls, you know, our kind of our perimeter cybersecurity pieces. That's what that core data center core stuff is. When we look down through disaster recovery backups, those pieces, parts of those will flood, will qualify for some of that money as well. So again, that, that two fifty helps augment the known expenditures that we have coming up to keep our infrastructure and our data flowing.
We won't have to vote on renewing Adobe twelve point five.
That's correct.
I won't ask back.
So next page here. We have our insurance deductible. We had five hundred thousand in there to begin last year. And we did have some smaller items. I think some of these may have been auto deductibles that we had to take care of. So rather than take it out of the, the operating budget, we did take those out of this fund. We still have almost four hundred and fifty thousand moving forward. The capital outlay fund, again, this is the remnants of the mill levy fund. And you know, a lot of this, you can see we spent, we've got shown here a million dollars on Oracle. For the twenty three year a different, different softwares that we have there. We we have like three hundred and twenty eight thousand that we still have not planned for as far as our expenditures. There's some potential items here listed down below that will be considered during the year. So we have a little bit of balance here that we'll look at as the year moves forward. And it's under those potential uses down at the bottom.
So the core switch and a data center, you have all of the infrastructure running into a core that core then distributes traffic. And that's what our core switches right now. It's we've got a Palo Alto Cisco switch that manages our servers. So as again, when you go back to the previous page that has our, what's now a seven year plan is originally ten year plan for the, for the technology. And those are pieces that can fall under potentially being used for the capital, capital mill levy piece because those were originally as the, as originally slated, but that also falls in that previous table that shows you six million dollars a year. So whatever we can do through this process to lower that six million dollars. We use this capital outlay, the state technology program. That's how we try to.
And ClearPass?
ClearPass is another cybersecurity function that sits on top of our Ruben network that controls access into the wireless and the wired side to make sure that you don't have intruders in the network when you got a broad network like we.
I can find somebody. Nobody heard that. But when you have a broad network like we have, that's open both internal, internal meaning in buildings, but also border to border wireless, what we refer to it as. You have a lot of people trying to access that. Clearpass allows us to maintain controls as to what types of data goes across there. So we don't have malicious data moving across our networks. That's Clearpass is an, is an Aruba piece. It's, it's, it's sits on top of.
The dorm access controls, are those, are we back to those door locks?
Those were, those were on before you guys, I think you guys voted, voted on those before. So.
Right, twice. No, once.
Just once.
No, once.
No, yeah, voted no. Yeah. So those were.
They were also part of the original.
Original.
Capital.
Are you saying Aruba, like Aruba Jamaica?
Oh, I want to take it. Aruba, not Arubin. Aruba is the brand. It's H, HP agent. Hewlett Packard became HP, became HPE, which bought Aruba. So it's not, it's not Aruba Jamaica. No. Who I want to take you to P Largo. Anyway.
So I've taken up about an hour of the work session time here, but you know, I made it through most of what I think are the important parts of the budget update to kind of give you a sense of, of where the information is. You know, there's some more information in here on like the student union dorm, but that's pretty standard for us. Little bit of information on our, back towards the back on our debt service, you know, we'll say that in twenty twenty five, we're probably going to have to look at some more debt service for Yorktown Road because this would be for the agreement that the college made several years ago, and we'll be bringing you more information on that.
Agreement with.
That's with the city of Vandover, isn't it?
Yes. Come out thirteenth or no Yorktown.
Yorktown.
Town and Congress.
Road on the east side of the.
There was an agreement that college agreed to, I think in twenty nineteen. And so they're finally getting closer to that. And we'll be giving you more information on that when we are a little clearer on it. You know, I just kind of like to go back to the timeframe here. We'll ask you to approve the notice, a public hearing and notice of the R and R hearing at the August board meeting. We, we do have a work session, or excuse me, not a work session, a finance committee meeting that will precede that August board meeting. You know, if you have specific questions, that might be a good opportunity. If you'd like to delve into this a little more, we've made that finance committee meeting open to other board members who would like to come. It, it would give us some time to go through some things.
Yes, open, open to all the.
Um, questions, comments? Are you ready to move along? Thank you.
McConnell.
McConnell?
And, and or.
Or policies.
Well, no, that was like, let's do all the work that was put into.
To McConnell?
Getting that data.
Yes, okay. All the work. Well, there was a lot of work. Heather can let you know what, how many hours, how, how many hours for team spent putting the McConnell information together.
All right. Well, I believe everybody received that packet ahead of time. So first would like to thank Dr. Neville, Dr. Featherson, Erica, our director at McConnell, Carrie and Candace all helped. So it takes a lot of people and it takes a lot of time, several days worth of time to compile information. So I'm glad to do it, but, but it does take away from other things. So starting on page one, we have just general revenue and expenditures from AY nineteen to AY twenty two. What you'll probably notice right off the bat, and this is huge thanks to the Forbus software. That's actually saved us a ton of time on this. This is pulled directly from that. I included printouts so that you could see. So those match what's in this table. The last time we brought this information to you, I believe was FY twenty, where that document that we brought to you showed like sixty seven hundred dollar deficit. So what we shared in preparing that data in the past is that it, there's a ton of stuff that goes into how things are charged. We use an average for the state aid. We, we know that faculty salaries get charged to McConnell for a full-time faculty member, even if they just teach one class because of multiple site. We've talked through all of that and how that works in the past. So what the Forbus software does for us is gives us a better picture of a true cost. So it's showing us the, the cost of instruction for the class that the faculty member teaches, not that entire salary. So those are the differences that you're seeing there. So again, thanks to the Forbus software, we can see that if we show what is truly being charged to McConnell, that we operate in the positive. So far right column shows you that. So just for example, in the past, like FY twenty, I went back and looked when, when we pulled up Forbus, the very first thing I did was pulled the last document we gave you all and sat them side by side so that we could see how it compared. And it is primarily state aid was a little bit higher. And then, and there was more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in instructional costs allocated to McConnell. That's not accurate. We don't pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, and you can see that later on in the document with how many faculty we have at that location. So that's revenue and expenditures. One thing, we've talked about this in the past, that doesn't show up in the revenues for McConnell is the placement testing that we do. Because we don't kind of budget by specific location, Erica and her team are doing that Klepp and D S S T testing, right? So we're bringing in revenue at McConnell. But that money goes into the testing center budget. So Erica compiled that data just from July of twenty two to June of twenty three, we brought in eighty seven hundred dollars in, in testing. That's, nobody else on the base offers that. That's something that we do. Erica and, and her team are able to do that for us. Next table there shows the enrollment. So we've talked about that again before. We, we have seen a pretty significant decline in our enrollment. COVID was a huge hit for us. We were, you know, headed in the right direction prior to COVID. We faced some challenges with marketing. We've talked about that. We've, we're in constant conversation with the leadership on base about that. Erica does a great job of getting in front of our education office there to let them know about, you know, hey, we need these opportunities. Despite this enrollment decline, we remain McConnell's highest enrollment. Other institutions have left or they've moved to online only. We are not allowed to be on base. So we can't be there and recruit. We can't, you know, have a physical presence there if we don't have classes in the classrooms there. That's part of our MOU with the Department of Defense.
What do you think about? If other institutions have done that at McConnell, what do you think about putting all those online? To try to save some money?
So again, we're not losing any money by being at McConnell, but couple of things here. Online is not the right fit for every student. We know that. The other thing is we, we can't recruit students. We have enrollment services. We have testing services that we get to have on base, no lease cost, no insurance, no utilities. We don't have that presence. If we were to go on base without our MOU to try to market in any way, we would have to pay for every single thing we did on base right now. That, those events that we attend, that Erica's presenting information, that's all part of our MOU that we get to attend those events. So the next thing we added, oh, sorry, I forgot. We added the enrollment by residency there. So we do have some Butler County students that are taking classes on the base. Second highest population, obviously. The first would be just an in-state resident, several out of state, some international, and then undocumented is referring to those DACA students. So those students are in-state. But in our system, they're, they have, they're labeled that undocumented on actually the technical label, it is undocumented in-state or in district or out district. Mary Martha, you had asked for some traffic information. So the at the McConnell campus and the service center from June of twenty two to July of twenty three, that shows the number of walk-ins, calls and then emails as well.
I have a question.
Sure.
On Kansas. That, this surprises me that there's that many people in the state of Kansas taking classes at McConnell when that is an air force base and we serve so many out of state men.
That's hours, not.
Yeah, that's credit hours, not head count there, but.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before I move on to page two? Okay, so we talked about enrollment decline. We have also responded to that. So we haven't continued to operate the same way we always have. You can see by the number of faculty and the number of hours that they're teaching, that we have responded to that decline and tried to be more efficient. We're adding things like high flex. We've talked about that before, linking to classrooms together to save instructional costs. We are continuing to expand upon that. We have to honor the, you know, what's in our MOU in terms of having classes physically on base. So we're working with base leadership on that. But you can see that over the years, we have declined the number of classes that we're offering, the number of faculty that are going to the base. So we're responsive to that enrollment decline and still remain revenue positive. So you can see the number of full-time faculty too has gone down. But what we also wanted to show you was that in addition to teaching hours on base, most of these faculty are teaching in other places. So leaving the base doesn't necessarily save us on that instructional cost because they're probably just going to shift to another class. So wanted to show you that. And before I move on to service center, does anyone else have questions about McConnell specific? Okay. So now getting into the service center. So we know there aren't any classes held there with the exception of adult education. So those aren't the, we don't get state aid for those. So when you look at the service center budget, it does not show any revenues because they don't, they don't generate any revenue directly. So what we wanted to show you, which we again have showed you before, is that this service center serves tremendous value to the college because of the enrollment that they bring in. So you saw the foot traffic. If you look at this table, it just shows you what we have budgeted. And I, so I've put some asterisks on FY nineteen and twenty. When we brought that information to you in the past, through doing that deep dive, we realized when you here at the call, we, we promote within a lot. So a part-time advisor will come in, move into a full-time advisor position, and then that position, so that person didn't get moved to the full-time location. So then we found out those salaries were actually being charged to the service center, even though they were at another location. So after FY twenty, we started cleaning that up and realizing. After FY twenty, we started cleaning that up and realizing, okay, we need to. Pay better attention. And actually Candace and I had a conversation about that. Uh, not just with this, with every position. When people move roles, gotta remember to go in and change. Oh, they actually are at this location now. Um, that happens frequently with advising just because of the way part-time moves into full-time. So um. So that's that change. That's so drastic between FY nineteen and twenty to twenty-one. Um, next column has the non-personnel, so that would be um, our lease costs, our utilities. Our lease cost is just over twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, Erica did some research. We have had a three thousand dollar sixty. Three thousand sixty dollars in increase over the last nineteen years. So very small increase. Um. That lease actually will be, you'll see it on the August agenda, hopefully. Um, no increase.
From the Rock Road?
Yes, this is the service center uh, from last year to this year. Um, so getting into that, the indirect revenue that I referenced, so. The first column shows the tuition and fee, fees, excuse me, that we bring in. Um. So we really started tracking this after the first data request. Um, we're, we're able to create a report that we can pull enrollments by. Um, the people at those locations that enter it. So um, we're bringing in a significant amount of enrollment. Um, from that location and then the far right column shows the state aid. And probably a, a low estimate. Um. But we had to use that average again for, for some of that. So. Again, huge, huge revenue compared to that twenty-one thousand dollar lease. Um, and then their operating budget, which is less than a hundred thousand dollars. Um. So that's service center. I, I have presented this next table before. I threw it on there just so you could. Uh, recall that the majority of our staff out there are part-time and all. All of them except for the advisors float back and forth to McConnell and the service center. So. They're constantly going back and forth and serving uh, in both places. So that top row shows those. Those staff are actually housed, their offices are at McConnell. And then the split there shows you the salary split, what's charged to the service center versus what's charged to McConnell's budget. Next page. Uh, again, Erica pulled this information. So we wanted to look at where our military. Like, how many military are taking classes with us? So this is a breakdown of military enrollment for the entire college. And so if you look at it, you see the highest ones are the veteran military family and air force. Um, so we wanted to show you this. Number one, uh, we believe that this is a significant. Um, that McConnell's presence has a significant impact on this because we're able to market and have conversations. Um, and have a presence so people know who we are um, as affiliated with military. Um. In addition to that, those credit hours. Generate, I mean, just in AY twenty-three, nine hundred, almost nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars in tuition and fees. Which would, if you use, we don't have our state aid, we couldn't do that average. That we normally use because AY twenty-three is not done yet, uh, until summer's over. But if we use last year's, which we're predicted to go up. It'd be four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in state aid on top of that nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So the concern there is if we aren't on base, if we're not able to promote there and have that presence there, this is a potential loss. Um, maybe not completely. I mean, we don't know, but this is something we wanted to put in front of you to show that we currently have. Uh, enrollment in these areas that could suffer, um, either from lack of presence on the base or um. Just a misconception that we don't support the military because we've walked away from serving them on our airport space, right? Right near us. Uh, and then the last page, Mary Martha had asked for some pros and cons. Uh, I won't read them all, but we've had a longstanding partnership with McConnell. We've been there since nineteen seventy-five. Again, highest enrollment on base. There's no lease costs, no utilities. Um, we, you know, no insurance. Revenue positive. Um, and, and that's. I think in large part due to Erica and her team responding to enrollment decline, making those adjustments, looking for ways to be more efficient. Um. So, and then there's the, the risks of leaving, I, I believe far outweigh the benefits for both the service center and McConnell.
About how many non-military related are enrolling at the service? You got any estimates?
You mean the uh, civilian? How many civilians?
Coming by and saying, oh, look, Butler's right here. I can just.
Well.
Military times. Wondering if there's a tool to put those together on the base, since we do get the free stuff.
Well, we do. So the bulk of our classes there. Um, our highest enrollment is no military affiliation. So civilians coming to take classes. Yes. Um, so let's just look at.
You wouldn't want the service center, you wouldn't want to force people that don't have a military affiliation to have to come on the post to go to a single service center on base.
Well, we're trying to figure out how to cut a little bit of cost, so I'm just asking to explore. I don't want to naysay.
But what cost would you cut? Help me understand.
I'm just thinking if we were to, if we were to uh, to do a logistics on. The, the cost center, I guess, of the Rock Road facility.
Mm-huh.
And combine it at the military base.
Mm-hmm.
And put everything else that we couldn't do on the military base online. Wouldn't that save us some money?
I don't believe so because someone would have to have a base pass just to come take a placement test or come see an advisor. And I don't think they would do it.
What kind of um? How much are we talking about? We've got about two hundred and fifty, twenty-five?
I'm talking about uh, over.
Cause I know they do placement tests there. I know that.
Yeah.
Teach any classes, but they can place.
Well, so if you look at wh- what I just presented, that traffic report just for. I mean, June of twenty-two to July, there's.
Eighteen hundred.
Those are the. Number of walk-ins, right? But. These advisors are also meeting with students. I mean, there's placement testing, there's enrollment, they're having conversations where they're connecting them with financial aid. They essentially serve the same role that the six hundred building does here. They answer all those questions. They connect them with those resources. Um. The other thing that's in the pros and cons is that public transportation will run there. We have students, maybe they want to take an online class. We require a student to talk to an advisor before they take a class. If they want to do that in person, they have public transportation to get to the service center.
Do all community colleges require a definite face-to-face conversation with an advisor?
I couldn't answer that. I don't know.
We don't require face-to-face.
No, we, we require a conversation so they can correspond. They could. Um. We know that some of our students need that. They need the face-to-face interaction to walk through. This is where I, this is my goal. Some students need more help than others. It's the same reason that online works for some and does. If I'm a student that doesn't like online learning, I'm probably gonna want to talk to an advisor in person too.
And a lot of first-time students, especially first-generation students who. Enter into the college, the, the biggest question that I always get is, is they don't understand the hour system.
Right.
The, that a three-hour course is meeting three hours during the week, three times a week, you know, for an hour, three times. Plus that the homework required is probably nine hours of homework per week versus. Because they're used to going to, to school, whether they're meeting an hour a day, eight or nine classes or seven classes. They, you know, they just don't understand that part, and that's where I have been with students. That, that's their biggest question.
Mm-hmm.
There is understanding, oh, I don't have to go to school from eight to three-thirty every day. You know, no, your schedule changes, your schedule may be different than that. Uh, you know, you may take a science class that requires you to be there. All five days.
Are, are the, are most of the courses, or maybe are all the courses that are taught at McConnell, courses that are also taught in other locations?
Um, for the most part, yes.
Are some of them online, other locations? Maybe I'm, I guess my question is, if someone wanted an online opportunity. They would have that opportunity right now without, without going through the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would also say that uh, our fire science courses that we do offer at McConnell would not be available.
Those aren't online. Not every course is available online, but.
And, and that's probably one of our higher enrolled.
It is.
Programs at the, at McConnell.
I'm just thinking the idea of if you, if you shut McConnell down, that everybody can go online. If folks wanted to do online, they have that opportunity for the first part right now.
The other thing with the fire science courses is if I understand some of those requirements specifically. You know, those folks that are on the service line like that have to be. Like less than ten minutes away from their duty station. So if they're taking classes, fire science classes, they, they potentially would not be able to leave.
That's, that's true of a lot of airmen and women that are taking classes. We talked about that at the board meeting.
Yeah.
Last couple of weeks ago, that some students can't. But I think to answer your question, I. I guess the, the question that the board would need to answer in trying to save costs, if they eliminate the service center, is would. A reduction of less than a hundred thousand dollars be worth the risk of losing this much revenue and state aid? Nearly two million dollars. I, I mean, I know what I would answer, but.
You know, here's the thing. I understand totally what you're saying, and I agree. It is a very important enrollment site. And it's for, critical for our revenue. But on the other, on the other side. I'm just looking at the, at the reduction in enrollment and I'm saying, you know. It, it's great that we have all these centers, but sooner or later, somebody's gonna have to make a decision. Because if it continues to drop like it has, we can't just keep on asking for more money.
But Julie. Why would you, why would you, why would you eliminate? I mean, if you're concerned about.
I'm not saying the data center. I'm not saying that one. I'm not saying the one on Rock Road. I'm not saying McConnell.
That's kind of what you're implying, I guess.
What I'm saying is, if not that one, then where else can we reduce?
We don't have that many enrollment steps.
We have one here. We have one in Andover. Um, and Rock Road. Really, those are the three main ones, right?
Yeah, I, yeah.
I, I. Sure, I just had a different question. Looking at the data, look like the average class size is about six. It was an average of six students with like five, six and seven. I'm wondering out of five hundred and twenty-four hours, how many? People are physically taken, but I mean, head count, that would put it down to like forty-some, which that's, I'm sure they're not taking twelve hours. So.
Yeah, I, I know. I mean, our head, our head count are in those classes is smaller. We try.
What's the total number of people?
I don't have the head count off the top of my head. I'd have to go.
I'm just curious.
But you also pair those classes. Aren't you pairing those classes with?
Yes, we are doing some of the high flex. Um, yeah, we're linking some classes with like, well, we do it with the Flint Hills too. That's the way.
Curious how many actual soldiers are taking classes.
Well, if you look at. So let's go AY nineteen. We got three hundred and seventy-two. AY twenty, four hundred and fifty-one. Again, when we talked about that civilian is the bulk of that. A hundred and ninety and twenty-one, three hundred and nine and twenty-two. Hundred and twenty-three and twenty-three.
So there's a hundred and twenty-three and mostly civilians taking classes on McConnell.
But, but also something to re- remember, the officers who are flying the jets, they all have degrees. Many of them from the Air Force Academy. They're, they're not non-degreed people. You might have a staff sergeant who's operating the boom, but the pilot and the copilot. On those tankers are degreed individuals who in many cases have either graduated from one of the service academies or. Or the different colleges around the country and attended ROTC programs or, or other programs. So you're. You're, the people that you're going after are you're going after the non-coms who may be going from a green to a gold program. Uh, or uh, you're going after uh, people who are getting ready to retire. I mean, I had a. Have a real good friend who teaches in the Wichita School System. When he was at McConnell, he started taking classes from Butler, went to Wichita State, got his teaching degree. And, and is now a teacher in the Wichita School District after serving twenty-five years in the military. So we're, we're. I mean. And to have all of the different retirees, I think these are great numbers.
And I, I don't want to discredit the fact that we have an enrollment decline. It's a concern. It's something we're concerned about, something we're trying. Um, new things. One of the things that I think um, hurts us the most. Is that because of the enrollment decline, we've had to cancel classes. We've canceled more of those, as you can see by the number of courses we're offering. And so if that becomes something that happens all the time, then it becomes. A student, well, I don't want to, I don't want to enroll here because this class always gets canceled and then I have to find another one. So we're trying to do more, implement more of that high flex. So that we can pair those classes to get to the place where we can say we're sharing costs because we have two classrooms connected.
Hi Linda.
It helps with the low. Enrollment, but also we can encourage them that, hey, these aren't going to be canceled because even if there's only five students here. We've got a classroom of however many at another location.
That would be only a virtual class.
No, it would be high flex where the instructor is teaching.
The people on base would, it would be virtual.
Not necessarily. The faculty could be there.
On base and then.
Mm-hmm. Yep, or the faculty member could rotate.
When, uh, when we first came on and started talking about McConnell, my recollection is we felt like we did not have great support. From the education commander, the wing commander on the post. And we feel like that's different now, because I know that's, that's positioned.
And there's the whole education office has changed as well. Um, so the last time we presented, we had, um, Jamie came in. Just talked about the value of the partnership. She's now in charge of that education office. She's doing a great job. Um. And new wing commander, do we know when yet? No.
And they filter those in pretty quick. I mean, that's a, that's one of those military bases that's a up-and-coming base, you know, that. A colonel or a, a light general will take for a little bit until they go to another base.
Yeah, and one thing to also keep in mind that I didn't put in the document, but um, we do have an M O U with the Department of Defense. That requires a teach-out. So if we were to leave, we would still have to teach out. Um, for the students that we're currently serving.
I just philosophically don't think Butler County residents should pay for Wichita people on base or state people or Wichita would take care of them. That's it. I appreciate all the information, the data.
To me, I mean, I'm looking at data that says that the people who are taking the classes are paying for it more than begging for it. I mean, we may be. Helping out with, with the, uh, the air, you know, just being able to, to me, our money is well spent. I don't know.
I don't thank you all for putting this. I know there was.
Yeah, lots of people involved. So thank you to them too.
For the timeliness to get it together to, on what was kind of short notice.
Like you said last year, when you presented that the numbers were like.
Yes, no, I, and I.
Was like, hey, we're losing nine thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, whatever.
Right.
So.
Um, let's, I would suggest that uh, unless people are just dying to talk about the self-evaluation, we push that with people being gone now and. Let's talk about the policies that Julie's proposed and if we have anything else to talk about tonight.
Well, I think that honestly, I think that policies are equally important to that self-evaluation. I. I was really surprised that the evaluation was so many questions for the board and only seven for the board president.
This is your evaluation that you agreed to.
You know, I'm not arguing that, Kim. I'm saying I don't care for that. I'm saying that on your evaluation, I'd like to see at least this.
Then we can fix that. That is entirely within our. One of us, do we not want to talk about the policies or no?
One of us didn't fill it out. I mean, I don't know. We're gonna say, hey, some of us don't like the other people, the way they do it. Some of us don't like the way you do it, but all in all, I think we're. We're coming together better, we're working, we're getting better professionally, the Robert's rules and.
We've got a copy right here. I've read it. I don't know. We've got a copy right here. I read it. I don't know that we.
When would we go over this? I don't want to do it out of.
No, I think it's a work session issue. I think we, it would be pushed to the August work session.
August is gonna be more budget stuff or shouldn't. I don't mind waiting. There's nothing much to talk about.
I mean, to me, it's 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 an open dialogue with the board and that's hard to happen. I mean, Mary Martha's virtual and I'm glad she's here and participating, but that's more difficult. Kim's not here, Linda's not here.
Do you want to go over it now, Mary, or can we wait?
We can wait. Fine.
We're not planning. Information.
Cause they'll be all finalized.
We could. I won't be here tomorrow. If our questions carry, we can come and speak to them. We're not like planning.
That we've got a couple of other things that we could do about in August probably too. So what what are those? Well, let's talk about your policy and then I'll share some information with you about H L C. They emailed some stuff out today too.
I'm not checking. So Julie, my understanding is what these are, these are, well, the one is an actual recommendation from the Board of County Commissioners. Or the Association of County Commissioners on the. The Code of Ethical Conduct is the political activity policy. So that's one that the commissioners have adopted for.
Already adopting, yes.
Okay.
I think that's really important. I have my personal reasons for that, and if you want to hear them, I'll give them to you, but. I think that. You know, there there is the at at Armsley. Transaction statute. Re involving close. I guess, close relationships out there, and I I don't really mind the close relationships, but I would never, this is what I want to say. I would never want any. Any company that we Butler County are doing business with. To feel obligated to donate to a particular trustee's campaign ever. I do not want that to, I do not want them to feel obligated. And after looking at. Some previous trustees campaign, I mean, I saw so many companies on that. Campaign literature that gave donations that we actually do business with, and I hate to see that. And it's not so much. That it's a crime or any of that. I just. I would hate to think we're asking for that and them having to feel obligated. So if no one else sees it that way, then we'll just continue to do that and maybe I'll go see him to share and say, hey. Can I have some money too?
You're, you are not, you are making an allegation by saying you're not making an allegation. I mean, you're you're accusing.
I'm making an allegation.
But the context in which you brought it up, you are clearly trying to suggest that somebody from the college is out there recruiting against your campaign and you have zero.
Oh, not against anybody whatsoever. No, I I.
I can tell you, I can tell you what my campaign was like because I and only I was the only one that contributed to it.
And it is not in here, but at least it would be a start. At least these policies would be a start, so. I'm I'm ready to go for them. We can alter them later.
I think we have a lot of the same policies.
Oh, well, where? I'd like to see them.
Right here in our code of ethics.
All of us match this.
I cross reference the county's code of ethical conduct with our. With the board's code of conduct and responsibilities and the. E E O C policies and the professional. Development handbook and. Except, I mean, the wording is a little bit different and some of these things are spread out among a couple of different policies, but. Except for about three bullets. Under principle one, just about everything in here somehow is reflected in. The code of conduct and responsibilities. Conflict of a code of ethics and stuff, and so I'm happy to show you the cross reference, you know, if you want to see them, but.
I would just like. The policies to be centered in one place and I would like for these to be adopted like they are, and if we want to put them in. In the. In the. I guess the board bylaws, whatever we want to do, that I I think some of the prohibitions are important and. I think there should be a concentration on being careful about being political while on the job, so.
Which exists right now.
We do have, we we have some information in the employee handbook about that. It's not quite as extensive as what the county has.
Well, that's the employee handbook. I think all.
But it still applies, it says right in there, it applies to the, it does. It says it applies that the that the. Handbook, the policies apply to the board of trustees in some cases as well, so.
In some cases, okay.
Well, the political act, you're concerned evidently about employees and political activity. This applies to the employee handbook.
And the, and also I thought that these principles were very basic and very easy to adopt. But if you already have them in your code of conduct and responsibilities.
I don't know. I find it. That you have trouble following ours right now, so why should we adopt more? That's my personal opinion.
If I said the world was green, would you say, oh, it's blue, even if it is green?
No, I'd say it was green and blue.
Any other.
Well, okay, why don't we just say then?
I think I think this does show that. Any trustees able to bring something to your discussion will have a lot more, much more open and allowing discussion.
Do do we, do we have any else on the? Topic for tonight?
Oh, I just want to give.
Other than.
No, but I just want to give you a heads up that I sent to you this afternoon. The, we have the final information from the Higher Learning Commission Institutional Actions Council met on in July. We have their final letter. I I attached the site team's final report. They Institutional Actions Council approved the. Site team report. They identified that we met all of the core components except to C, which was governance. And and that was met with concerns. And so the overall report then recommendations are met with concerns. We have an interim monitoring report that we have to submit. There's a little bit of confusion on the dates in the report because one of them is. In January and one of them is in February, so Phil and I need to confirm, confirm that. I. I'm thinking because the institutional actions letter that I attached says it's due on the twenty third of February. I'm thinking that that's probably when it's due, required to be due, but. The actual reports mentions January a couple different times, and so we'll we'll double check that, but. We have some work that we have to do this fall. Related to the expectations that the Higher Learning Commission has for us to resolve the. The issues that have been noted, so read that final report specifically to C. Is the one on governance.
I'm not showing you.
Oh, oh, maybe I have it, but I forgot to send it. Send. Sorry about that.
I was gonna say, I have, I I don't have it in mind.
It's all ready to go. It's sitting on my computer right now. I apologize. I thought it hits. Yeah, the the. The entire site team report's about sixty pages long, but there's some stuff at the end that's federal compliance. Things, but overall, it's a really, really good report. We've been reaffirmed for accreditation, but we've got some stuff we have to address this fall. And so we'll talk about this. Phil and I will. Go through this with you at the next meeting. And, you know, hit some of the high points and talk about some things, and then Tom Borden Kircher will join the August work session. And provide some information on what H L C specifically expects for.
Do we have what you're gonna mail? Is it a complete copy of what they gave?
Yes, I just said it was. It's the site.
Don't have, I just looks like.
Well, I'm sorry, I forgot. I I just said that I don't think I hit send.
I just wanted you to know.
I will do it right after we get done. So read through it, please. Phil, when Phil and I talked about it the other day, he said it's. There's a few, a few things in there that we have to, you know, just fix. One of them that. Is a change in Higher Learning Commission expectations in the last couple of years is that for any of the standalone certificates, they want. Outcomes identified, all the institutions are going through and doing that. So that's one of the things that we have to work on and actually people are already working on it. We've got some. They think we're doing too much assessment, basically, and so we're gonna change maybe some of the assessment stuff that's done, which is, we all kind of laughed at. But a really, really good report, yes, of course, assessment. Really, really good report in all the other areas and still identified in his experience, it's unusual that you don't have other little things that have to be addressed. But. In in our cases, it's just governance issues, so read through that. I think in my email, I identified what the pages, I think they're pages twenty two through twenty four, I think. Specifically for that core outcome, but spend some time reading the rest of the report because it identifies the great things that our folks are doing. And really gives kudos to. The good things that they saw while they were here, so. So we'll have, yeah, we'll have Tom. Tom will connect with us at the August work session to go through. And specifically be able to kind of line out what H L C expects us to do. Talk with you guys about what. What needs to be done, I guess. So that's what I know.
Shelby.
I did email the trustees. At some point, I think it'd be good if there was like one license for a trustee.
Oh.
To look at B K D data, if we need to. Come into whatever facility at a specific time or.
We did talk about that, actually.
Okay.
And and could set up a. Tom Neville said he had room in his office area, right?
When they're interested or.
We'll just, we'll just have Tom log in. I mean, we, yeah, we'll have, we'll have a workstation come in and use and.
It can't be that much for for one person's access, I can't imagine. Right.